We're also live streaming, so. Should be aware of that.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Calling together the Planning Board meeting for September 6th for the City of Brockton. Just quickly to let you know, this meeting is being recorded and allows for real-time public participation. Comments can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this meeting will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure accuracy. Start with roll call. James Sweeney?
Here.
Marty Crowell?
Yeah.
Larry Hassan?
Here.
Yolanda Spinola?
Here.
Ah, sorry. Tony Gonzalez here. Okay. All board members are present. See. Is there a, well, first let me read the agenda. Sorry about that, folks. Looks like there's no A and Rs or lot releases. We have a definitive subdivision for 262 Winter Street, Kent Estates. 516 Pleasant Site Plan Review has been continued, so if you're here from 516 Pleasant Street, this will not be heard tonight.
That's the two Dabbies?
Yes.
Convenience store? Okay.
Okay. 710 Oak Street Site Plan Review is on tonight. If you're here for 1315 Main Street Teen Challenge Site Plan Review, this has been continued. It will not be heard tonight. 26 School Street Site Plan Review is on for tonight. This is a 40R. That's the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to accept last month's minutes, meeting minutes?
Motion to accept August minutes?
Second.
Okay, roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay. And no street exemptions either. Alright, is the applicant here, David Cruz? For the 262 Winter Street.
And is there anybody else? Bill Self is also part of that gang. Who else is with Winter Street? Shaun, we're working on getting you over there now. There you go. Bill, will you be presenting?
I'm here. Now I can, now you can hear me.
There you are, sir.
Good evening. Yeah, Shaun, Shaun Pilling will be helping, assisting with the plan, the plan viewing, Rob.
And he's there.
So he's all set.
Is Isaiah Thirwell? Oh, that's Isaiah. Never mind. He showed up as a panelist. Apologize. Okay, Bill, you're ready.
Yeah, good evening. If Shaun, if you could call up the plans, if you could have the screen, Rob. There we go. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we were here in front a few months ago with the preliminary plan. From then, we went, after approval, we went to the Board of Appeals and got approval on the lots that were deficient in area frontage and lot width in depth. As you see, I'll explain exactly, you know, where we are. This is up off of 262 Winter Street. Being shown where Lot 7 is, and then access for the subdivision will be off the end of a dead end existing now Kent Street. And at the end of Kent Street is Lot 6, which is number 34. In both, number 34 Kent and 262, went to straight around by Dave Cruz, Cruz Properties. If we could go to sheet number two, Shaun? And if you could, if you could reduce that a little bit, I'm looking at, there we go. Sheet two, I just wanted to show the, so the board what the, remind the board of what the configuration was. You had three separate lots. You had the 262, which comprised about two acres. You had the lot to the back, about 28,000 square feet, over half an acre that was owned by the City of Brockton, that was bought by auction by Dave Cruz, Cruz Properties. And you also had number 34 Kent Street. If you can look at number 34 Kent Street, it was a very, very odd configuration when the lot was first created. You can see that there was, what we needed to do was to re-divide everything, both those houses, both those lots, and to create the roadway. And certainly by the results of that, we, we, we improved the condition, certainly of number 34. If we could go to sheet number three, I think, Shaun? Sheet number four. As you can see, if you can just see that the, where the original lot lines were dashed in, you can see the reconfiguration, starting with, with number 34, you can see that it certainly made it a much, a much better lot. You know, with, with the reconfiguration, that was, that was the, that was the lot with the less frontage of all, which we ended up asking for relief of 75 feet on that. And the way that we, we looked at that, it had, it had great improvement to where the house was. Now you can actually have a driveway and certainly a more usable lot out of that. And the rest of, the rest of the, the rest of the lots that you can see, they're, they're all being proposed raised ranches that will be consistent with the other housing in the neighborhood, excepting number 262, which is a, an older colonial-style home, fronting on Winter Street. They'll be constructed a cul-de-sac at the end. We asked for the, for the waiver on the, the total length of Kent Street to be able to, you know, develop this particular configuration. If you go to Lot 5, Shaun, I mean, excuse me, sheet five. What, what you see here is, it's a little bit busy, but I wanted to see, it deals a lot with how we, how we laid up the lots, how we did our grading. A couple of things, one of the main things that came up, there was one or two abuttes from the, the, I think it's Cackadee Lane or Cackadee, Ardsley Drive out and back. And what was agreed at the, talked about at the Board of Appeals meeting, was that we'd installed, the contractor would install a stockade fence along that entire, along that entire northerly property line that abuts all of those, all of those lots that are, you know, where the real lots are. The other thing that we did during the, during the, the grading of all the lots, you can see about seven, eight feet away from the line. We're gonna, we're gonna try to install a small three-foot-high, more of a less, a rock wall. And what that does, it gives a little bit more of a flatter area right to the rear of the property. If there's any, if there's any large trees, any, you know, really trees worth saving, certainly we'll, we'll avoid any and all of those that we can. It also creates more of a plateau effect to the rear of the properties, to the rear of the buildings on that, the new houses on, on this, on the subdivision. And we did that, mitigates the, some of the runoff, the velocity of any runoff, surface runoff, towards those properties in the rear. The other thing we also, also have on all of the lots are the recharge units for all of your roof runoffs. Again, minimizing any existing runoff in that direction. The, the way that we've, we've designed for the drainage to handle all the surface water is that there's an existing, in, at the end of existing Kent Street, there's an existing sewer and drain line that goes out towards the back of number, I believe it's number 30, 31, house number 31. But it goes out in the, through an easement and out back out to the Ardsley Circle. So what we've done is that there will be some water that'll, there's will be a high point. So that some of the water coming down the street will be caught by, there's a couple of catch basins right in, right in front of number 34. And in turn, they'll put those into a manhole and then go to the, to the, to the northwest with a cert, with a line that drops into a, to a, a silt, you know, area, catch area, you know, in the drainage basin itself. As well as two catch basins up in the cul-de-sac that will also drain into that siltation area. Once it's in there, it'll collect into that detention area where it'll heat, it'll, it'll pick up the water with your, any size peak storm. And you'll see that there's an outlet structure, more to the front left of the lot, and that'll be for an overflow area that now we will have a return drain line that will go down into the existing drainage at the end of Kent Street. That's basically how the, how the process of the, you know, the surface runoff will be handled. I've been in front, we've reviewed it with Jaki, with the city engineer, who was very helpful, and he seemed to, you know, we seemed to have something that, you know, we are comfortable with, and he certainly was, gave us some points that we changed, any changes that we made, any recommendations we've added to the plans. One other thing that we have done, there's a dead end at the end of Kent Street, there's actually a hydrant with, which is a dead-end water main. It's a six-inch line. One of the meetings, on the Board of Appeals, the chief fire chief did have some concerns about, you know, dead end or having a size and things of that nature, but our intentions to, actually, we went in to the Wanda Pop and had the recommendation, and we're gonna take that six-inch existing line, run it down to the cul-de-sac, and you'll see there's a 30-foot reserve or proposed utility easement. So what, in essence, we're doing is allowing us to tie that loop, that water loop in, that line into the main on Winter Street. Now, we were told that it's gonna be a six-inch all the way down through until you get to the, to the 12-inch main, then there'll be a reducer for us down to eight men into the six, and that was under the recommendation of water. So we hope that that was, that was resolved. Any, any, any questions that the, the initial, the fire chief had? It's pretty, pretty well explains what our intent is. We feel it was, it really sit, most of the lots were larger or same size than the other, you know, certainly in the, in the surrounding lots. There is one parcel noted as parcel A, and that was an agreement that initially, that from the start, we made, one of the, one of the homeowners off a lotson had asked if there could be some area reserved, giving him a little bit more space in his backyard. So we've, we've accomplished that as well, and, and drawn and shown on these plans accordingly. If there's any, any outstanding questions or anything, any real, any questions that you might have, we're happy to answer.
No, thank you. You did a nice job explaining and clarifying a question I would have had, and thank you for working with the Planning Department the way you did to satisfy some of the city's concerns and getting it to this, this stage with no questions from me. And questions from other board members?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may. So you're not asking for a waiver for utilities, so everything's underground?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, alright, that's it for me.
Yeah, we have, we, the only, Mr. Sweeney, the only, Ray was, were asking for us file utilities. Under the recommendation of Jaki, we had moved some basins down, and because we needed, we needed a waiver, slight waiver on, on cover, you know, three-foot minimum, but he was fine with that, and we, we went over everything with him and they, you know, showed him what we're doing. So that's listed on page one is all the waivers that we're asking for.
There, there are three wait, three waivers, correct? Frontage waiver for lots 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7, and then for the dead-end street?
Correct.
And then typical residential cross-section.
Well, if you, if you, sheet one, back to sheet one, Shaun there, you'll see that we had, the, the waivers we're asking for, the design standards, but exactly, lot 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7 were the waivers for the frontage. Dead-end street, asking for the waiver of your 700 feet to 810.8 plus or minus 84, which is an extension of about 394 feet of roadway is what we're adding to. And then the, the other waiver we asked for was the cover over the pipes on the drain pipes that are listed on, on sheet one.
Okay, so if this plan is passed, then these waivers will be voted on individually at the, at the end?
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Self, how do you do? I was not on the Planning Board when you first came, so I just have one quick question. I understand that you, that the neighbors were talked to, all the abuttes around this, around this development?
Yes, we, we've had, we've had at least, we had two onsite meetings prior to, during the design stages. We had one when we first initially came up with it, and we had, we had also had a secondary one, getting, you know, closer to the final, but, and we had those with the city council, we had settled up with him. So it's, it worked out very well. The, the abuttes came in and, again, the, the concerns that were brought to us, it's always, you know, water drainage, things of that, surface water. And the other thing is, 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 they all want privacy, and then the new lots will want privacy as well.
Right.
So that was, that was brought up, and that was to agree with, with the, with the homeowner, you know, so we're, we thought we were, you know, working with the neighbors as well.
So the development is gonna add to their property values as well?
I certainly hope so, yeah. It'll be nicer, you know, in doing, there's been improvements down in that area as well, roadway improvements already. So it's, it's, yeah, it'll be a great asset to the, to the neighborhood, we feel. And again, they were, they were very healthy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to the board. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if he can speak on amenities like streetlights or sidewalks, are those not?
Yeah, if Shaun, if we could go to the, probably the page of sheet five again, actually, let's, let's go to sheet six, if you would. Sheet, sheet five is good. Well, sheet six, yeah, that's good, sheet six. What you'll see here is what we, what we've done, we, we, we haven't asked for any of your roadway construction waivers. It's sidewalks both side, granite curving all around. These lots are being accessed and built on for both sides. It's not like it's just a one-sided street where, you know, different cars for, you know, use and sidewalks and things. So that, those waivers, we have not asked for any waivers on sidewalks or curving and/or street width. We feel the Kent Street has, has good width to it. It has no sidewalks or curving on it, but this certainly in, in the future, should the city, go, had, do an improvement on that, it would certainly add to, you know, quite a nice street. The other thing we, we try to do on our subdivisions, we create the, there's a 10-foot easement, planting easement all the way around the street on the back, so it's actually, it's an easement on the lots, and that's where we put our trees. So that's where the planting, as you see, the, the green circles here will be, you know, plantings that will go. We try to get two or three in each lot. And with the reason we do that, it, we try to get them back so that in the future, they're not, they're not lift up the sidewalks. You know, over the years, those trees get up, and next thing you know, it's, everyone's tripping on the sidewalks, 'cause it just hangers all the, the tumors concrete or concrete. So that seems to work out well, but that's the amenities what we put in there, to be able to, you know, dress it up as best we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Seems like it's well-designed.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, there are no other questions? Is this open for public or ready to open to public?
Yes, we are, Madam Chair. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this project, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen so that we can acknowledge you. If you are on a smartphone, dial star nine, and, is it star? Oh, star nine. And that'll have the same function as a raise your hand. Again, use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you have a question. I do have a question. Counselor Lally, let me move you up. And he will be joining us as a panelist.
Alright.
Mr. Lally, good evening.
Mr. Director, thank you. Members of the board, thank you. Um, as Mr. Self mentioned, we had two neighborhood meetings onsite to talk about the project. I, you know, and I know that we were at the zoning board as well. I basically just want to, you know, reiterate some of the things that, you know, were brought up by the residents. They just wanted to make sure that, you know, the property would come out well. I believe there was a request, yeah, there was a request for a stipulation that there be a buffer of trees against the property that backs up to Ardsley Street or Ardsley Circle. And, you know, they, they wanted to make sure that we had, you know, some, some clearly defined operating hours to make sure that this wasn't something that, that really disrupted the, the neighborhood. Again, so, those things I would, I would definitely put forward if the board would be able to implement any kind of stipulation, especially for the, the greenery. But I also want to, you know, express my appreciation for the developers' willingness to, to meet and listen to the, you know, the neighbors. But as always, I, I leave the, you know, the judgment and the decision up to the members of the august body, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Council.
Well, we did hear Mr. Self discuss the tree situation in his presentation. Some will have to be moved as part of the reconstructing of the, of the construction of the stone wall and grading, but they're doing their best to avoid as much as possible.
Yep, I, I just mean, keeping what we have, but also some kind of restoration. The, the people are worried about, you know, making eye contact out of their back window with someone else.
Let's have the fun of being neighbors.
And, Madam Chairperson, I could, if I could just jump in quickly. I think, I think what the contractor realizes too, that it works both ways, privacy for the existing residents and privacy for the new lots as well. We feel that with the, with the raised wall down the back and that little plateau, plus that open area, we're gonna try to save. As everyone has seen, once you have trees cut down in a, you know, in a, you know, it's not really a dense forest, but the, the trees look a lot different once you take all the brush and everything else away. But I do think there'll, there'll be additional planting from the new homes. They'll be, they'll, they'll, they'll see that they might, they'll wanna plant along that wall, and that'll be for additional privacy in the future. That's what we're, we're hoping and encouraging.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other public comment?
I do not have anyone else who wants to make a public comment. I do not see anybody's hand up.
Alright, thank you. That portion is now closed. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, on the, on the process here, what, what would be a stipulation for that? Are we thinking that, just a moment of deliberation here?
Well, I believe it's already on the plan.
Okay, oh, it's on the plan, okay.
Is that correct, Mr. May? I thought it was on the plan. Some had to be removed for drainage, but there are.
Uh, yes, it was on the plan.
Yes, okay.
Motion to approve with standard conditions.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Alright, next, we have these waivers. Okay, the first waiver is design standards, frontage waiver for the lot, following lots 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7. Their motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Second is a waiver regarding dead-end streets, maximum dead-end street length waiver for Kent Street. What is the length for this, by the way?
The final, the final length would be 810 feet, 810.84 feet.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yep.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Right, last one, typical residential cross-section, and I'm, minimum cover over drainage lines waiver for the following, D1, D2, D3, D4, D5, D8, and D9. Their motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Alright, thank you.
I'm surety.
Oh, that's right. Got that covered, Mr. Self, for.
I'd like to come into the planning board, I'm sure we'll, we'll have to come in and work out whatever the, whatever the board would need for the surety part of it, Rob.
Well, you can, so for the temporary, you'll be leaving the lots as surety, and then we'll do lot releases.
Yeah, I think, and I'll, I'll, I'll speak with the, with the developer, and I'm sure that's what you'll probably wanna do, is, you know, we'll meet and, and the, and you can review and whatever your recommendation will be, he's more than, you know, adamant working with you. That can be discussed.
That's fine, as long as we didn't forget.
We never forget that.
No, ma'am.
I am.
Alright.
A note right here. Thank you, Mr. May. Next up, 710 Oak Street.
I, I do wanna, I would wanna thank the board very much, and also the planning department for their effort and help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, is Chris Fazio?
There's Chris. I'm moving him up.
So this is a site plan review?
Promoting him to panelists. Is Mr. Attorney Burke, is this also your case? I'm going to move you to panelists, and if it's not, oh, I have somebody on the phone. Um. Whoops.
I wanna be where Mr. Fazio's at.
I'm here.
I said I wanna be where you're at.
Oh, jeez, oh, God. I'm in my little man cave.
Okay, with the person on the cell phone, or on the phone?
Rob, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, sir. Could you identify yourself?
Okay. Attorney Jim Burke. I represent Chris Fazio. I have some technical problems, so I'm doing it on my phone tonight. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the planning board. I have the pleasure of representing Chris Fazio. Chris came to see me, I guess, about six or seven months ago with a concept of building a, a cowwash in the 710 Oak Street, in that area that's between Cumberland Farms and Walmart. If, as I suggested to the zoning board when we made an appearance, there is a perfect site for cowwash in the City of Brockton, if there's such a thing. I think this is probably it. We, we appeared before the zoning board of appeals, were successful in granting a special permit to be allowed to go forward. Chris has been represented throughout the process by Phil Henry, who's here, and is gonna make a presentation. We would like the, the permission to approve the planning board site plan approval, and it's been, I think, substantial. Uh, and it's been, I think, substantially vetted by not only the department heads, but also a beta because we have been required to also deal with the conservation commission. So if Phil's there, uh, I'd like him to go forward and go ahead and give you an outline of the project.
Yeah, that would be great. And while you're doing your presentation, can you also speak to, um, the approval needed from the conservation? I guess there's an outstanding issue or meeting or something with them? If you could clarify that for us.
Sure. Uh, for the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. We are the civil engineers on this project. Um, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Could you make it a little bit larger, Phil?
Yes, let me see if I could zoom in. I'm going to start with this locust plan here just to orient, uh, orient everyone. I, as although I'm, I'm assuming everyone knows where we're, where and what we're talking about, but is this, is this better, Rob?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, so, uh, just to situate everyone, um, Route twenty four is running along the top of the page. Oak Street is running along the right side of the page up and down. Uh, this is the Walmart here, uh, and this is the Walmart entrance. The subject property that we're before you tonight is this trapezoidal lot area, which is, uh, about two and a half acres in size. And as you could see from the aerial underway, it's, it's largely comprised of, uh, open lawn area, if you will, and, uh, a section of the Walmart, uh, parking lot. And, and what you see on top of the aerial is, is the, uh, is the facility that we're, that we're before you tonight. Um, so with that being said, I'm going to pan down. Excuse me. Okay, so now I basically zoomed in and I've rotated the property such that Oak Street is off the page here. The convenience store and the gas station is just off locus in the frontier. This is the Walmart parking lot, or drive, uh, drive aisle, excuse me. And then the Walmart is, is, uh, off to the rear off locus in the southerly direction. So, uh, what, what we're proposing is a, about a forty-five hundred square foot vehicle washing facility that, uh, you can access via one, one main access drive off of the Walmart drive located here. As you, as you enter, you have the option to use one of the twelve vacuum spaces, one of which is ADA compliant. Uh, once you're done with those vacuum, vacuuming your car, you can then enter one of three ways into the, into the facility. There is, um, two entrances here. That, uh, and then there's also one entrance here as well. Um, um, the, there, there is also, should you just want to vacuum? Or should you, uh, decide that you needed to, to leave the facility? There, this outermost lane also provides a, um, an overflow queue lane, if you will, just to, uh, exit and, and not be stuck with, um, in the queue itself. Um, in terms of exiting the property, um, you would, all access drives, as you could see here, exit back onto the Walmart driveway, and then you could choose to either go back to your, your vehicle after the car wash, or you can exit, uh, via the signalized intersection, uh, on, on Oak Street. Um, we are, um, proposing to tie all the utilities into the, uh, shared utility and access easement area, which is this hatched area here, uh, within the Walmart driveway. Uh, we are also proposing to handle our stormwater area via an above ground stormwater management infiltration basin here by which, uh, surface runoff will be collected via inlets and then, um, conveyed into, um, this, this infiltration basin. Uh, those of you that are familiar with the property, there, there are wetlands to the east and, and to the west, opposite the Walmart drive through. And, uh, the wetland to your page right or west drains in an easterly direction or page left via a forty-eight inch pipe. Um, we are proposing to connect into that forty-eight inch pipe with the proposed development stormwater infrastructure. Um, with regards to conservation commission, we, we've been in front of the conservation commission, I think in early July or, or, or late June. And, uh, since that time, we've been working with the reviewer on a number of technical items. And I'm, I'm happy to report that I think we're at the, at the, at the deadline, at the final few stages. Uh, there are two remaining items open that are essentially administrative only. I'm confident to say that there will not be any plan related changes related to responding to the last two, uh, issues uh, that they've raised. But, um, with that being said, I'm happy to answer any, any questions that the board may have.
Uh, thank you. Just, just a quick question. This doesn't have any bearing on the plan, but is this a chain of car washes? What's the name of this business?
Uh, well, this is, it's not a chain. It's privately owned. Um, it's going to be called, uh, Super Car Wash.
Okay, and, um, so I see all the cars exiting out of the car wash that looks like there's the three, three bays?
Yep.
Okay, um, and I can't really tell, but coming out of that Walmart, Costco wasn't through there now. There's no, right now Walmart has an issue where they need some lines on the road and some more stop signs and yields. People come, can't tell you how many times, uh, car, car accidents happened coming, almost happened coming out of Walmart. And now I see these cars all exiting in that same area. What do you have for stop signs, yields? Um, curvings, anything for safety?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a good question. So, uh, like any, uh, internal intersection, if you will, uh, the, the main driveway will have the right of way. So if you could see the, like, these gray, these gray lines, those are the existing, um, stripings for the, for the, for the, um, for Walmart itself. The, the proposed exits for the, uh, for the facility will have stop lines and stop bars at each exit. And they'll be landscaping to kind of funnel people in and, um, we, with stop signs itself, uh, we think folks will, uh, you know, go at the appropriate speed. Keeping in mind that as folks exit the car wash, uh, they're going to be doing so, uh, in, either in neutral or at, at, at very, uh, low speeds. We also have from the opposite direction, do not enter signs that are facing the drive aisle as well as striping on the pavement as well.
And what about, um, this actually might help the flow of traffic come out of Walmart to get people to slow down. But, um, looking at the very first one at the top of the page, um, is, do you, do you have a sign? Or could you consider putting a sign there saying, you know, caution cars exiting or whatever is appropriate?
Sure, yeah, let me make a note of that, yep.
Madam Chair, this went through the ZBA and just a heads up that this was one of our major concerns was the traffic and the flow.
Oh, really? I just know I've almost killed myself coming out of Walmart, but thank you for that. Um, if you have any other comments, James?
Um, well, that was our concern and we, you know, we were going to see this here, uh, on planning. Uh, you know, he's, seems like he's putting it towards the property owner. Um, on the ZBA, he did say if there were any issues that they would work with the property owner to install signs. Um, I don't, I just don't know if the board wants to make that a recommendation before or after there's a problem.
Repeat that last piece again, sorry.
I just don't know if we want to stipulate putting in signs, uh, to, to either stop or warn the traffic internally in that property. Um, you know, before there's an issue, but they did say they would work. You know, if they were having issues, they would work with the property owner to put signs up, B bumps or whatever to remedy any, any issues that you could foresee.
So, Mr. Henry agreed to that, um, caution signs, uh, cars exiting. And so that can be, uh, if this is pass, it can be a condition. Um, in the way of speed bumps, what were you thinking or what was the zoning board thinking?
Well, we didn't get to that point. He, we did know that they have to stop here, um, before. Um, we just made it a, you know, we can kind of see it before it happens kind of thing. And, you know, if it does happen, I, I'm hoping, uh, they would take the proper precautions to keep people from frequenting a massive store like that. So I, I, again, I just don't know how the board feels about, you know, anything else of that nature, but just kind of wanted to get it out there.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to tell what's going to happen in one sense. I think it might slow down people coming out of Walmart. And then if the sign Mr. Henry agreed to, um, and if there are further issues, hopefully you'll work together. Who's the property owner? Is that?
I am Chris Fazio.
For the, no, but the whole lot?
The Walmart, Walmart is the larger.
Area, the whole property.
Well, well, just to clarify, um, the, the two and a half acre property where this facility sits was subdivided out. So it was once all Walmart's property, but this is its own property, as is
Oh, okay.
the convenience store and gas station up front are its own property. So technically, there's three properties here, if you will, the Cumberland Farms that faces Oak Street. And then the, um, the, this property before you tonight, which accesses the, its property through the Walmart easement.
Uh, Mr. Henry, could you go back to the locust map that had the ortho, um, behind it? It was easier to see where, um, vehicles were coming and going.
Yeah, I mean, we liked it. I mean, just based on anecdotal experience, uh, because we did the Cumberland Farms as well. A good majority of the folks also use this outside lane, although I, and I agree with you that incoming traffic, um, uses this, this inside lane, if you will. But, um, you know, we would tend to agree that with the structure here, I think folks will, will naturally slow down. We're also willing to add any signage that the board may feel necessary on our property and will be committed to working with Walmart to the extent that we can on adding any signage on their property.
If I could just add, I mean, I, I can foresee this. If someone's coming from, uh, right where twenty-four is in the top part of the parking lot from Walmart, you know, I could see him coming right to a point where your exit is, you know, yep, coming through there and you've got, you know, a corner right there. That's not, you're not going to change any of that parking lot within your property, right?
No, uh, no, we're not, we're not proposing to change that.
And then I can see from the, you know, assume another car is coming from the opposite side and you triangulate on the exit of your car wash. Do you see what I'm saying?
Are you saying that, that people are going to cut, cut through here?
Potentially, you might want to consider boxing off your property. That way you keep a straight line and that would avoid, you know, uh, such a wide angle of cars meeting at the same point. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I know exactly what you mean. And I, I appreciate the comment. I think, I believe, and I'm, I'm not the, like, the transactional attorney or the attorney on behalf of Chris, but I believe there is language that requires the parking spaces that are on Chris's property for Walmart to be unimpeded. So I don't know if we can do any physical hindrance here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, but, but I, I do want to.
Could you cap, could you cap the ends of those rows with some sort of maybe even curbing? So, uh, yeah, right where your cursor is, like, say at the end of that row and then up the end of that row. That would eliminate a lot of cutting through that way and, and maybe drawing the traffic down, uh, somehow just to get it straight, you know, a beeline straight. And then, you know, you really can't.
Mr. Henry, could you zoom in a little bit more so we can see where that is? Because it looks like the property line is at the back or in the middle of a parking stall.
Yeah, it's along the spine of the, of the striping.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, so, um, I was wondering if they can clarify, you can't restripe any of those parking, uh, those parking spots? Or you can't do any restriping on your property?
There is, I believe there is language in the agreement when Walmart sold this property to, um, the seller, that a certain number of spaces needed to be maintained. And I could tell you that the number of spaces that are proposed to remain, um, meet, just meet the zoning, which is five hundred and forty-three spaces based on the current zoning parking requirement per the Walmart gross square footage. So, you know, in full transparency, I think carving out some end caps with some landscaping, although that's a, a very good idea. Um, we, we may, I just don't want to put the Walmart in non-compliance. That's, which is why.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Quick question. Right where the cursor is now, um, just south, or not south, but just below the property line, there's a little appendices that seems to stick out that is shaded as if it were a landscaped area. Yeah, is that, is that true, a landscape buffer?
Here?
Because that's, yes, that's where the road, that's where the lane changes.
That's right, yeah. So this, this is proposed to be striping. Um, uh, just because we didn't want to put any, any physical barrier on what Walmart's property, but we could certainly add signage right here facing this way for, for oncoming traffic heading out.
Certainly incoming traffic would see that striping and, yeah, and move. And so that would cause them to slow down.
Yeah, can, can we make those signs flashing?
I mean, I guess, Chris, do you have any, um, objection over that?
Um, well, where would that be on that, on that dock shaded area right below, Phil?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess we're talking about maybe adding signage facing page left or south so that oncoming traffic can, can see this. And, you know, we could do, uh, you, it could also be like, you know, lit up as well. Like, there can be a, a light on top of it, like, facing, facing back at it.
Yeah, I don't think that should be a problem. Or we can do some type of reflection tape or flashing would be fine. That's fine.
Something to make sure people are paying attention, because these days, you know, people don't, they're on their phones. Um, now, looking at this, from this angle, what about the cars coming in? Because it's hard for me to tell. Are they going to be whizzing through or coming in now? Are we going to have the same issue as coming out with warning cars? Do we need to warn them here too?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think signage is always a good idea. We could also put something here as well, being like, saying, um, the, you know, caution, uh, vehicles exiting car wash.
Now, I think that's a good idea. I really appreciate you being cooperative, because this is a dangerous area.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, so, um, guys, if you can't do island caps, could you pot on the rows there? Could you do, um, instead of a, you know, if you don't have the room for an island cap per the space, could you do like signage pointing? So if you're coming out of the Walmart and then you're looking at your property from, you know, this, yeah, from the, from that side, um, where the, where the rows are, could there be signs with directionals to kind of folk, focus the traffic going down where we kind of want them to go?
That shouldn't be a problem.
Uh, you know, on each, uh, you know, maybe two signs on each of the rows there. So at least it, you know, we're, we're telling them where to go, at least.
And, and if you could work it out with Walmart, that is an end cap where you have your little appendices, appendix hanging down, uh, outside of there, that would, if, if that were a planted, raised planted bed, that would be a lot more conducive to slowing traffic than just the safety tape. But that's something that you, that's not on your property. I understand you're going to have to negotiate that with, with Walmart.
Exactly, yeah, I, I get, yeah, we could say that we, we can work in good faith with, with Walmart and we can propose that. Because as part of this deal, I think our, um, Walmart has to, um, approve the layout as well. So we can show that to them and they could, they could opine on that.
I think one of your strengths here is that's, this traffic is also their issue too. So working this through behooves them as well.
Right.
Adam Chair, if I could. This, this parcel of land was originally intended to have many stores on it. Um, and it sat for a lot of years with just Walmart there. So I welcome this car wash. Um, I live on Oak Street and I frequent Walmart. And when you turn in from coming down Oak Street to take a left, there's a, there's an arrow there, um, for people to come in and there's arrows for people to come out. The light is excellent. And since the Cumberland Farms has been built, I don't know of any problems. People can clearly see there's a gas station there and people are exiting and entering the gas station right from that Walmart road. So I don't think it will be a problem to add a car wash. I just, I really don't, I mean, I don't see it to be a problem.
No, it's, it's, it's designed nicely, but I do think that we need to take caution with the cars exiting. We were very cautious when we approved the Cumberland Farms with the way cars entered and, uh, entered, entered and exited to make sure there wasn't any issues. We just want to do the same with this, uh, very nicely designed car wash. I also welcome it.
Madam Chair, uh, I just have one question. Uh, I, I did notice that the Cumberland Farms has a sidewalk, uh, approaching the Walmart. And I know this is a car wash, but, and you, you're not going to have, uh, people walking up to the car wash, but, uh, it might be.
Certainly passed.
Yeah, that people might have to pass by the car wash to get to the Walmart. Um, so I was wondering, is that, is that little shaded area extension of the sidewalk? extension of the sidewalk?
Yes, yeah, when we met with Rob May in his office, uh, probably almost a year ago, over a year ago, that was his first comment. So there, there's
I appreciate you all. Uh, it seems like you're trying to be good stewards. I appreciate that.
All right, uh, any other questions?
Madam Chair, that's Larry. I do have a question. Not so much about the plan, but the operation, what the hours are, and is this an automatic car wash or is it a manned car wash or a little bit of both?
Uh, this, this is fully, fully manned, um, minimum of two employees at all times. Uh, there are two in bay automatics and there is a one, uh, tunnel that is fully automatic. Uh, so there are no in, um, self-serve bays where uh, the public can come in and wash their own vehicles. They're in the vehicle the whole time. They do not exit their vehicles. There's no walking around. Uh, only other, uh, the only time they would be walking around is just vacuuming their vehicles. So, um, again, it's fully automated and it is fully employed, fully manned.
And the hours of operation, Chris?
Uh, seven AM to seven PM.
Okay, Monday through, seven days a week?
Seven days a week, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the questions, planning board members. Ready to open to public?
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you'd like to comment on this proposal, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a cell phone, please press star nine to indicate that you would like to speak. Again, use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you wish to be recognized. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone indicating that they would like to speak.
Okay, so, uh, before we're ready to make a motion, if this plan does pass, there is one condition for the flashing caution signs on the, the front side of the building and the backside facing Walmart. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions, uh, and also final approval being con- contingent upon a conservation commission approval.
Second, and we need, uh, add the condition for the flashing caution signs again.
It, oh, okay, I thought you were prefacing that in the, and also the conditions stated, uh, by the, by the chair.
Okay, thank you. Second, Marty, did I hear Marty make a second?
Second, yep.
All right, perfect. Roll call. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Larry Assam?
Yes.
Delanda Spanola?
Yes.
Tony Convalves, yes. Congratulations, Mr. Fazio. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a site plan review, twenty-six School Street. This is a forty R. And the representative is Scott Rubin, Esquire.
Um, Scott, we've been brought, um, Carlos forward, but is there anybody else, uh, on your team that should be here?
Yeah, uh, we have Coleman Barnes from
Uh, there's Coleman.
Yes, most importantly.
Whoa. You should be joining now.
Hello, everybody. Looks like my camera's having some issues. Give me one second.
Uh, as long as you can see your screen, that word.
Uh, who's having issues?
Uh, it's just, it's just my camera. Uh, we can continue if that's
Okay, yeah, sure, we can hear you.
Okay, great.
Who's gonna pull up the site plan?
Uh, let me open that up.
I think Coleman has a presentation as well.
Yeah, if you wanna do that, that works. I can share that as well.
You wanna open, Cole?
Um, do you need Mr. May's assistance with the site plan?
No, Cole just needs to open it. There we go.
Yep.
That's beautiful.
Very nice.
I gotta tell you, before they start, um, board members, we have been working with them, um, diligently for the last year or, or so. Um, you might remember there was a, a previous forty R proposal for this site. It was a smaller, um, four-story uh, building that sat on the back of the lot, had proper, uh, parking in front. And, uh, we were happy that this owner has chosen to go, uh, with a more urban uh, look and feel to the building. It brought it up to the street and, um, add some street frontage along, um, School Street, uh, for pedestrian activation. So I will shut up at this point and let you guys take over your presentation.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. May. As, as you said, um, my name is Scott Rubin here in, uh, seventy-one Legion Parkway, Brighton, Mass. Uh, I've been in the city since nineteen sixty-nine, been practicing law in the city since, uh, nineteen ninety-four. I'm pleased to, um, to represent this twenty-six School Street project. Um, as Mr. May mentioned, we've, um, worked diligently with the planning department, had several pre-meetings with, uh, with Mr. May, uh, and stakeholders to sort of develop a plan that we thought was best suited for really, uh, I think the only undeveloped parcel, uh, realistically, that's, that's very close to City Hall. So it's an important project for the city. Uh, we've met with, um, the city leaders as well, uh, the CFO, um, and the assessor as well to, uh, work hand in hand with this particular project. Um, it's gone through a couple of incarnations. Uh, we do have several waivers that need to be addressed. Uh, we did review, uh, through tech review, uh, with the city engineer. We did, uh, look at the beta, uh, questions and we did respond to all those beta issues and the third-party reviewer. And, uh, I'm gonna give, uh, really pleased to, uh, introduce you to, uh, Coleman Barnes, who's worked tech with, uh, Design Resource Team out of Boston. Again, he's worked very hard on these plans. I'm gonna let him go through his, uh, sort of presentation and then I'll, I can go through the waivers um, at the end, and then we can address any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, as we mentioned, uh, I'm Coleman Barnes, uh, Associate Designer, um, Design Resource Team in Boston. Uh, we'll kind of jump right into this. We'll give a quick run through what the project's looking like and, uh, and elaborate tomorrow after that. So just a quick overview, the building is looking to be about seventy-seven thousand square feet, about eighty-five feet tall. We're gonna have sixty-six units, uh, thirty-one beds, thirty-six two beds. We will have affordable units in these, um, as it is forty R. And we're gonna have twenty-two parking spaces, uh, from the limited space on the, uh, sites parcel. And then there's also gonna be a commercial space, looking to be restaurant, but it is retail in general, can be used for multiple, um, uses with about four thousand square feet. And a quick look at our site plan, on the left, we have the civil and the survey of the site. So we kind of have an understanding of how that's splitting between Church Street on the north and School Street on the south. On the right, we have the more architectural plan, which should be kind of just an overview from the top-down look. Again, uh, Church Street on the north and South, uh, School Street on the south. Um, here's a quick, just a quick overview of our layouts, um, kind of cookie cutter repeating after the third floor. And that's strictly for the apartments and the layouts of that, showing consistency and standards in that sense. Uh, the top left is just a basement for retail and as well for the elevator override and for the main portion of the building. And then we have our middle floor for the ground level and all the parking and the main portion of retail. We can, I have a couple of large plans that you'll be able to see a little bit better. And then just another quick shout out to the unit layouts. Um, you start to see how we're laying out the, um, one and two beds and how the units specifically will have, some will have two bedrooms, two bathrooms, some two bedrooms, one bathroom. Um, again, just a quick noticeable layout of how we're kind of laying this out from floor to floor to floor. And as I mentioned, here's some, uh, enlarged land basement on the left, again, primarily for the retail space, but, um, also useful for the, uh, for the elevator overrides and not, on the right, we have the parking, retail and the main lobby for the entryway of the residential portion in the lower right, which we did have multiple conversations with the planning department about, uh, one, making, kind of enhancing that space, putting a better, better, uh, street appeal for it, as well as, you know, in reception seating area. Um, really utilizing some mailroom portions, um, kind of just dressing up that portion, really making it a focus for the residential. Uh, and then we also dress up the retail side a bit too, to kind of match that, to make that street level really appealing to anybody passing by. And then these are the unit layouts, a little more specific. Uh, the difference between type A and type B, um, AKA the six and seventh floors different. The lower right portions are jogging just a bit there, right by those lower stairs in that bottom right unit. Otherwise, everything else is pretty standard and we are gonna try and use as much uh, standard materials. That way we're, you know, minimal waste and everything's kind of on a nominal basis. And then we have some elevation. This is the street view, uh, here, the south elevation. Showing some of the materials we're planning to use on the left. Uh, again, we've gone over with the planning board with some of these materials to really jazz up the building, make it stand out and make it have some curb appeal. Again, uh, west elevation here, adding some Juliet balconies to really dress that up. So it's not just a flat facade. Another conversation we'd have the south, uh, sorry, she, the north elevation on Church Street, where we'll have our garage opening entrance um, as well as the rear of the retail spaces, um, and access for them to drop off goods and whatnot. And the east side, again, emphasizing those from yet, uh, those Juliet balconies, uh, we also are dressing up our, uh, stair shafts. That way we don't necessarily just have one box standing out from the building. We have another, uh, image. I'll show you that kind of stands out. Here's just a little before and after for you to kind of see how that's changing the scenery and how it blends in. Quick shot of the upfront of the entryways. Uh, we just used up with some eyebrows and a lot of lighting to that way, kind of draw people in. And then here's just a shot of some nighttime views, again, using lighting to make the building kind of pop, um, and as well as make that entry, those entryways pop to help direct people on the pathways walking by. And I, uh, I'll pass it over to Scott to elaborate on some of our wickers.
Uh, thank you, Coleman. Um, one of the things that we talked about in every view as well, which, um, Carlos, Ferreira has been in touch with, um, our neighbor to the, to the right, which is to, uh, remove, I don't know if you can go back to that slide, my phone in the, uh, yep. So this area, obviously trying, was sensitive to the, you know, the issues that we can have downtown, we're trying to, based on the way the shape of this lot looks, we really have this gap. We needed to provide, uh, some room for our neighbor to access their, their building. But we also, um, had asked them and they agreed to remove that canopy. So that would provide, it's really over what, what used to be a walk-up window, banking window, and, uh, when this was the point many, many years ago. We're still in discussions with them. We're not exactly sure of the timing of that. But we also would like to, um, you know, prevent anybody, pedestrians and traffic from sneaking up inside the building as well. Uh, so we're certainly sensitive to the issues that are, that are downtown. With that, we pretty much proposed a plan. Um, I don't know, Carlos, you can share the, if you can go with the site plan if you wanted. You know, if we can switch that, we really pretty much built out to the, uh, to the lot lines here.
Yes.
For, you know, for that purpose, um, you know, we, that's one of the encouragements of the forty R project anyway, was that we pretty much use as much of the space as we possibly can. I wanted to reiterate that we do have a letter which we provided in the packet with the parking authority for additional spaces in Lot B uh, that they secured for us. So we pretty much have a one-to-one ratio with the, um, the number of units that we have, um, along with the twenty-two spaces that we have in the onsite. Um, so I don't know if the board would like me to go through the specific waivers or not. I know that, um, I had had an opportunity to look at the planning board's recommendations or the, um, the internal recommendations. I think there's a, a couple of additional waivers that we would need, uh, that were listed in the beta, um, in the beta comments and which we, we did respond to. I don't know if we specifically sent in a separate request for those, but we had, um, landscape, landscape waivers, a waiver for a traffic study and for loading dogs. So in addition to the waivers that I believe are on, are we specifically requested, we want to make sure that we, we include those waivers. Um, there's really no opportunity to do much landscaping on this site. Uh, again, we've pretty much built out to, uh, the lot lines, there was really no room for, for any additional um, any additional landscaping here. I think the project itself is, we expect to beautify that particular neighborhood in that area. And so I don't think landscaping was necessarily um, requested and we really don't have any spot for a loading dock for the, uh, for the commercial space. So, uh, and, and since we have requested and have some additional off-site, uh, parking, just up the street, uh, we didn't think it necessary to provide a, a traffic study. So, uh, with that, in addition to the other waivers that I believe are set forth in the application, we certainly open this up to, uh, to any questions at the door now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you, you mentioned Lot B is gonna give you access to a four-one-on-one parking ratio?
Uh, we
Lot, Lot B across the street, is that it?
I think that is adjacent to
Lot B is on Lincoln, I believe.
Yeah, Lincoln Street. And I believe our letter from Parking Authority, let me take a look. They have provided us with forty-four spaces. So that in conjunction with the twenty-two that we have would be, um, would be sixty cents. So I believe we're one-to-one. I think the forty R is twenty-eight, technically.
Mm-hmm.
Requirement. Um, so forty-four and twenty-two onsite matches at least one-to-one for the number of units.
And where, um, where are the lights on the building to, like, scones for the side and front down to the sidewalk? I saw some next to the doors, but I don't think you addressed any on, along the top of the building or sides.
Could you go to that night photo?
So is the light just coming through the windows or is there gonna be actual
Sciences.
So we have sconces along the street side and then, uh, up the, uh, stair shaft here, those would be illuminated at night.
Oh, wow.
They go down on every floor level.
I like that, okay. And, um, I might have missed this, but where's the trash can? How does the truck trash, truck? Truck? Trash truck get?
In, was it accident?
It's on the side, on the right side of the building.
So we have tr- trash here, just behind the retail portion and then yes, also the residential trash is along this alleyway that is fenced in for, strictly for the building.
So who picks that up?
Well, we'd have to have, uh, commercial trash pickup and that, that comes here.
And there's access for the truck to get to the trash can off of Church Street?
Yeah, we would have, we would have similar to what pretty much all, all the dumpsters are fenced in anyways, so they'd have to pull up and, um, and we'd have a rolling dumpster to, uh, to leave that.
Okay. All right, thank you, him. Board members, questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, so just hypothetically, this isn't, uh, you know, I mean, this is just in the future. Does the rooftop of this building, the structure that you're building, would that support any rooftop activity in the future?
Oh, nice.
It, I mean, it's a conversation that could be had, but
But is the structure that you're building gonna support, could it support basically a, an, a, above level?
We could. We, we, we discussed that idea of like having a rooftop. Um, but we didn't, uh, we didn't pursue any, any further because the building is gonna be for rental use and then there's the liability of like maintaining and how to control the number of people that will go And how to control the number of people that will go to that rooftop. So we, at at one top, we prefer not to give access to the to the to the homeowners.
Gotcha. The structure as it sits, is there open space on the roof potentially in the future?
Uh, we could add to it.
Okay. Yeah, just a future, just a, yeah, just a future look, nothing that would be, nothing I'd be asking of today, of course.
We thought about like having having a like a little bit of like a decking area over the restaurant area also. But then it will impact the the apartments that are on that floor.
Okay.
Uh and then we decided to not do anything there either.
All right, um my la- last question would be, could you pull up the space between the buildings again where you have the trash? Just see, it seems like, so that bright side, you really don't have much space. And where you have the trash, what is that dimension in there? What's the open space? Is it uh just dimensional wise, do you know what the open space is?
Give me one second.
Off the top of my head, I want to say it's at least ten feet. Yeah, those are six foot doors and then um, you know.
Well, actually, the other side, where you have the, on the other side, the left side where as we're looking, yes.
The restaurant.
Yeah, so all behind there going towards church street. No, I'm re- I'm looking at that as all open from the all the wall there.
Isn't uh, there's an easement there.
Okay.
Actually, so that access point, yes, would remain open.
Okay, so that's an, all right, that's an easement, okay.
I believe that originally was an easement to the building behind, which probably isn't.
Probably just, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking event space, um that's all. Is that the type of space that you could host a small event?
Where is our lot?
So I I guess the question is, could the restaurant space open up onto that corridor?
Right.
And have that corridor with uh some live plants and pots and things like that.
Live music, you know, you name it.
It would be, it would be about uh, that easement is about fifteen feet wide.
Okay.
Yeah, he could. And also we could have like an access to above the restaurant because there's no sort of a apartment. Or or building above the restaurant, the restaurant just sits by itself.
One, okay, one level on that on that side of the building?
Yes.
Right, that extends out, okay, all right, yeah.
I mean, I I mean theoretically, we're supposed to leave it open, but it's a, it's an odd circumstance because there's no curb cut. So clearly no, clearly nobody's using the easement.
Right.
And the building behind us doesn't really need the benefit of it and we have thought of approaching them for sort of. Um but in all, for all intents and purposes, if we were to use it or a restaurant was to use it temporarily.
Seasonal, right? Seasonal, yeah.
In, for all intents and purposes, nobody's actually using it, it's not really usable, a usable easement, since there's no way to drive on it. There's a potential that you could walk on it, but nobody, nobody really needs it for for access, so.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys, I appreciate it. Great plan.
That, that's good enough, good, good stuff.
Madam Chair, if I could just stick it, jump into um uh adjust Mr. Sweeney's concern. Um as many of you know, we are working on uh a new zoning proposal for downtown. That will match the downtown action strategy and urban renewal plan uh that will increase density um. Even more, but it also has a requirement for twenty five square feet of uh open space per unit. And that could be um achieved either through balconies, uh terraces, patios. Or a rooftop amenity for the tenants, so that is coming in the very near future.
I love it. Thank you, Rob.
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a question in regards to uh school street, I I do notice that. There's a curb cut there and I think like that curb cut most likely will be removed and the sidewalk will be um probably. Re- that will be fixed. Um I I'm just wondering if they can just uh clarify that and tell me more about like. If there's any opportunity to add street trees, I know it's a pretty narrow sidewalk, but I don't know how much opportunity there is there.
What we did is it, uh I mean, the the zoning by law actually encourages us to go like to the property line. And what we did is it, we actually set the building along that the 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 school street side. So we have uh in front of the building, it's way wider, the building is like sitting like about like five and a half feet. Back from the sidewalk and the sidewalk, I think on that area is about like uh. Uh, let me just measure this, it's about like uh uh ten feet, uh seven feet, I think sidewalk.
I think the answer is yes.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's opportunity for, it's it's about twelve feet wide right now in front of the building.
Yeah, I mean, street trees would definitely be nice in front of that building. I feel like you all can't do landscaping, but. Adding street trees would be a great amenity to add.
You're thinking in the ground or planters? Cause in the ground and the sidewalk spooks grow up.
Uh, we have ways of dealing with that.
Yeah.
That we did, the opening that we did in the front of the building where it has the name of the building. That idea, it was for like a, some sort of a yard, a landscape area. To have like some some plants to bring like some green towards the street. Uh, uh but we can certainly add trees to it, I'm not opposed to it.
Yes.
Well, I I would, I would like to see sidewalk trees and then something softer um closer to the building.
So that, I mean, you know the street better than I do, Mr. May, that sidewalk's wide enough so that pedestrians can pass and. Pass by trees?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and um. Did you, did anyone address the planning department's um one last concern about seeing the length of the overhangs of the roof lines? Roof lines extended?
Yeah, I did see that in the notes. I'm not sure how much ability we have, I can have Coleman talk to talk about that as far as. Um any overhangs that might go over the lot line, with a little concern about.
What, it it's not so much over the lot line, is that we're trying to make the top of the building stand out and not be flush with the roof. And as you can see, there is this um brown cornice that wraps around there and I'm. I'm using my pointer to point, obviously you can't see that. Uh and then above the uh second bump out, so it it adds a shadow line and I think that that comes to uh Evan's comment.
Oh, okay, so what shown is is appropriate?
So, could could you extend that a little bit more than what it is here?
Yes.
I, in in terms of all of those roof lines, we definitely have some room to grow with that and without going near the lot lines. Um so we could do that and maybe dress up with some kind of cornice so it it doesn't overhang too far without looking um unintentional.
Sure. Sounds good.
No problem.
Uh, other questions from board members?
Oh, I think you guys did a really good job with this one. Um fantastic.
Uh, public comment, anyone have their hand up, Mr. May?
Actually, we have one attendee with his hand up. Uh, that's uh Deputy Chief Williams.
Oh, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I I love the project, I think it's a great project, just one comment for the architects. Um your distance between the building and the property line and the next building. Um take a good look at your fire resistor ratings for the walls and your windows included there, you've got windows on either side and that might become a problem.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you would like to address this project, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you're on a cell phone, please lap, please press star nine to let us know that you would like to speak. Again, uh use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to address the pu- the board. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see anyone using the raise your hand icon.
All right, so um if this plan is passed, there's a couple of conditions, um the sidewalk trees. And extending the uh overhangs for of the roof lines. Then after, if this plan passes, we have one, two, three, four, five waivers that we'll vote on individually.
Again, I think Madam Chair, we might need a few additional ones as well, um.
So you said the loading dock and landscaping waiver, and then we have the parking. Uh we have the setbacks and we have the lot area open space floor ratio.
I think traffic was mentioned, uh we were on it.
Say that again, please?
Waiver on the traffic study that came from data.
Yeah, that's fine.
So a traffic waiver?
Traffic study waiver.
Traffic study waiver, okay, thanks. All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. With standard conditions, are we doing the waivers separately or all inclusive?
The waivers are separately, but if you're making a motion, include the um two conditions with the sidewalk trees and the extending the overhangs of the roof lines.
Okay, so with the conditions of sidewalk trees and extending of the roof lines.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, so now the waivers are up. Um first one is for parking reduction of onsite requirement by forty four spaces. Is there a motion?
Yeah, make that motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Second one of the setbacks, allowance of the necessary front, rear, side and roof setbacks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Next one, we have a lot area, necessary reduction of minimum lot area per dwelling, floor area ratio and open space requirement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, um next one is a waiver for a loading dock.
Motion to approve.
All right, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, next one is landscaping waiver.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
All right, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, and the last one is a waiver for the traffic study?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Okay.
Madam Chair, on the uh, on the project here, they will have to seek CBA approval for height, am I correct?
No, ma'am, uh no, sir.
Oh, okay, is, so what is, just so I understand.
Under forty yards by right.
Gotcha, all right, thank you for clarifying.
Um and a quick point of uh to note, I apologize and and the team forgot to mention this also. But the name of the building is the exchange and that refers to the city's first telephone exchange that sat on that site. Operators who used to have to place your calls individually, that used to be there.
That's awesome.
That'd be nice to throw a little history something there so people would know like me, because I wouldn't know that, if I walk up, but I can read it, you should add that. Or it's not a condition, just you volunteer that.
For sure, if you get them from the uh Deputy Chief Gallery, with the, see we have some pictures in the Sparkers Society.
Oh, a quick uh for our minutes, uh how many units again was this going to be?
Sixty six.
Sixty six.
Sixty six.
Okay. All right, congratulations, thank you.
Excellent job.
Good job, guys.
Or is your hand still up?
You're muted.
Thanks.
I'm I'm also, thank you.
Okay, I forgot to put his hand down.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Marty Crowell?
Yes.
Yolanda Spinola?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right.
And don't forget, you're all invited to attend the community meeting next Tuesday, the twelfth. Where we're going to hear from a retail coach, who is our our retail recruitment uh consultant. And uh should be an interesting discussion to learn what kind of retail we're going to be tracking and targeting in the near future.
Rob, where is that meeting?
That is in the uh special events room of the public library on Main Street.
Thank you.
And while you're talking about it, next Thursday is the draft for the new zoning that you were talking about downtown at East Middle, six P M, if you guys are interested in that as well.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Busy, busy.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye now, thank you everybody.
Thanks.